Start our regular board meeting. Before I do anything else, in case we kind of wind down towards the end. On the site correction in number seven, a date and time of next meeting, January ninth.
It was my calendar.
It was a typo.
Yeah.
Um, so number one, any public comments? When what's going twice? No public comment now.
Who's joining?
Writing it down, Lori Breyer just joined. Um, okay, treasures report and approval of expenditures, please.
Um, the finance committee moved to have the expenditures of fifty-four thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents by the board. I so moved. Is there?
No, second. What?
There's a motion on the floor?
Oh, I thought you would. Um, oh, we have a first, a second, or any discussion? All favor? Okay. Consent agenda. In today's consent agenda, we have one approval of the minutes, two outreach committee report, which is not listed, but is there? Um, and the president's report. There is no admin committee report, building committee report, or upper Hudson this month. So do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I had a couple of comments on the minutes.
Okay.
There was an individual mentioned in the minutes, then I questioned whether that should be the case. In keeping with our avoidance of doing that.
Well, could you be more specific, or does that also go over the threshold of what you want?
You don't know quite how to do that without being?
Well, the minutes are out, I think. So they're on our website.
Are they?
Mm-hmm. Unapproved minutes always go up on the website, then they're turned into approved minutes.
Okay, just it it just mentions that in the request from library staff. Uh, it comments on the quotes what was said in the letter.
Is that is it item number, is it three?
I think I had one A.
Yes, you have C. Whittaker.
Is it also for B then?
But don't forget she was part of public comment.
Yeah, that's that's why that was included.
I don't know. That was just one thing I picked up and then, um, under three in the same section, the board decided that the appeal would discuss it at the next outreach. It sounds like that it the appeal should be discussed at the next outreach meeting rather than the appeal would discuss.
Which section?
One, eight, three.
Apologies for my grammar.
Yeah, it's okay. I just, I want you to know I read these. I do read it. So.
We will be discussing the appeal. No, that is not such as that is not a suggestion. Thank you.
So there was otherwise, I mean,
let's, I'm.
You did a great job, but.
Thank you. No, I'm not. That's that's not a criticism. I appreciate that. I I bothered my poor partner for several hours on Sunday night. I was doing these. It's like you done yet.
So anyway, I I would vote for the consent agenda with those.
The changes. Okay. We'll do it that way today. So, um, we had a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Kind of done? All in favor?
Alright.
So on to our regular agenda. Safety issues, safety report.
Okay, well, that's a lot of what's in my director's report. Um, I know that, um, the board wanted to know what goes on in the safety committee. Um, the safety committee met, uh, on, uh, December sixth. Let's see. We're still working on the fire extinguishers, but.
That's the mapping, correct?
That was what?
That's the mapping, or is that the?
Yeah, the maps.
Okay.
And, um, all that. So we've got that pretty much in hand. It says I will review an incident report, um, from Lansingburg. We questioned the, uh, response times, although normally this response time seemed fairly good. This one was long, forty-five minutes, so.
This was for Troy Police Department?
Yeah, that, um, but it went through nine-one-one, so. I was planning to talk to the nine-one-one people. To see, um, although, yeah, it could have been a case where, you know, the police were tied up too, so. Anyway, I'm pursuing that. Um, we, um, have started, uh, blocking anonymous phones. People who have their phone set on anonymous. Um, and we've had some, uh, anonymous calls, um, we've received, uh, calls from that were sexually explicit. Um, specifically to staff members, and it was somewhat upsetting. And we felt, uh, that it was important to block anonymous calls from. And that's been working, uh, when we've had, uh, no additional, uh, complaints.
Was this something, was this something that just started? Has this been like an ongoing issue, or was this? Was this something that happened in the month of November?
No, no, it's not just November. No, it's been over a period of time.
Okay.
Um, what we're doing is, um, blocking them for like a month. Um, if we lift the block, is that going to, you know, start the whole thing again or not? So.
So anonymous means that there's no name, nothing. It just has a number or says cell and?
There's no numbers, no nothing.
Oh, no numbers?
Yeah, it's the, what is that, star six, seven, or whatever, where you can like mask your number? Yeah.
I'll just say block.
Private name, private number, okay?
Yeah.
When it's not my customer?
Private number is different, but yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because you have to contact.
There are no caller ID's.
For that. Yeah.
Huh, yeah. Okay, thank you.
That's unfortunate.
Although, I don't answer block calls.
That's, that's smart, but you're public libraries, so.
But should the library, I mean, that's, I guess, you know. Anyway, that experiment so far is working.
Um, it doesn't mean that they can't get through. They just have to.
They have to call with their actual number. Yeah.
Yeah.
Star six-nine or something to turn off. Anonymous.
We, um, talked about lighting updates and lighting in general, big light.
Excellent. Yeah, very sure. Very, very good. I did a double take walking through the other day.
I I I didn't have a professional here. I just had myself who's an amateur, but if you look at Sage and you look at this building, particularly nursing building, they've got the big floodlights and that's, I said, that's throwing a lot of light. So I ordered that one as an experiment. And, um, you know, I thought it's, I mean, it's great. I'm recommending another one in the back of the building. And I'm recommending one in this courtyard.
Please install them, or is it this similar-ish?
Electrician goes.
Okay, gotcha. I didn't know if we were doing the same thing over there. If there was a light that I just didn't know about.
Now, we've got, uh, took them a half a day to, for some reason. That one's on a photo cell. Um, normally the lighting that we have are on timers. But I'd like to go completely with photo cells. I think it, you know, yeah, it's much an idea. That leaves me with the front of the building. I don't know what to do. That's the horse historic structure. I'll have to ship it over here in a minute, putting big floodlights out there.
Um,
I need probably expertise here.
You've got options on the bulbs. You've got options to swap out those bulbs. And an electrician can help you with that, with what what they've got in a supply house.
Oh, yeah, we can. We can increase the bondage and the fixtures we have. But it's not gonna not gonna be a big deal. Well, part of the problem right now is that only street light cross from us is out. So, yes, I reported that and trying to get the city to turn that one back on, but I think.
Minnesota ones in the park, but we're off the sage are back on again.
Yeah.
Thank you for reaching out to them.
Yeah, their lights across here are back on. So Sage has lit up pretty well. Um, but I don't know. It might be, it's still good, I think, to explore what else we can do with the front of the building.
Yeah.
Um, so that's still on the drawing board. Um, in addition, uh, got a light for Lancingburg, one more light in the side of the building, and we're gonna put a one on the, um, fourth street side.
Did, um, since, since you brought up Lancingburg, um, did the city ever get in touch with you again about the, uh, manhole cover that was coming out?
It was fixed.
Yeah, it was fixed for you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all set. Um, and let's see, oh.
They don't even talk to you.
I just had to be up there and they were fixing it. They were pretty much done.
I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, uh, the other thing that, uh, one of the things that we've been, uh, working on that it the friends have agreed to, uh, cover the cost of additional cameras for main library. They wanted, we wanted three more cameras, uh, for cubby holes areas that we just don't have a visibility for. And and that estimate is, uh, over four thousand dollars. So they agreed to cover that. And so you know, we signed a contract to get that done.
It's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um.
Friends.
Yeah, thank you, friends. Okay, well, I think the other other thing. Um, we're gonna start a program of walkthroughs, um, which will involve reference, uh, YPS and circulation. And there'll be a regular schedule to follow every half an hour to go walk through the building and and, um, but we have a YouTube, um, video that, um, Virginia made as to how to do that and what to look for. And, um, I'm gonna start, uh, next week, Monday.
Are you gonna?
Can you just talk a little bit more about that, what that means?
Well, um, the walkthrough is designed to, um, acknowledge the people in the building. That it's also designed to be, um, visible. Uh, and it increases our visibility. And, uh, people know that staff members are aware of the versatility. This building is a little bit difficult because, um, you know, ninety percent of the activity is down here, and then we have this reading room upstairs. We have no staff member normally there all the time. So that's a big thing, plus the stacks. You know, the person will go up to the reading room, uh, into the meeting room, into, uh, the stack areas on all floors. Um, and, uh,
Is this just one staff member, or who is doing the walkthrough?
Yeah, one staff member with, uh, walking torches.
Is it, does it rotate? Is it, or is it?
Yeah, it's who's on the desk. Okay.
Yeah, we got. I had seventy-five people like Albany, and I can have two or three being. Um, and then we, you know, the plan too, I mean, obviously sometimes, uh, like referenceably busy, so they can call in somebody else to help, you know, do the walkthrough.
Turns out we had decades ago where you, we, there weren't enough staff, you routine, we have people walking through that with somebody sitting at the desk up in the reading room. And over time, we lost that.
Right.
Okay, yeah. Are you gonna have, um, Paul, for the walkthrough, are you gonna have like more senior staff, like lead it at first to like set expectations of what it should look like? I know you mentioned like a YouTube video, but I feel like people are more seasoned.
Well, I think the idea though is it's gonna be everybody in these departments is involved. So, yeah. But, um, generally, we we do walkthroughs. This is formalized.
No, yeah, I appreciate that.
You know, we, uh, all the staff knows about walkthroughs and and has done those. Um, it's just that we haven't done them on a regular basis.
Yeah, actually, yeah, okay.
Um,
How many times a day? This is gonna look like. Hour, every half hour?
Did that start yesterday?
No, no, Monday.
Is it Monday?
Yesterday.
That's the official starting day.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, yes. But it's our, yes, I can say Tuesday.
Today's Tuesday, yes.
Yeah, yeah, Monday. I'm sorry, yesterday. Yeah, I'm, I'm like, this is already Tuesday. I'm behind, no?
You prepared your report in advance.
Sorry, I just want to, so are they, are they relaying any information, or only if they have to via the walking torch? So they're just walking around and observing if they need to say, got it?
Okay.
Great.
Right.
Love it.
I'm gonna hang around so someone can engage with me.
What did you forget to do at home? What, what did you forget to do at home that's safe to hang around?
And then, um, of course, uh, some of us attended the meeting with Andrea from Albany. And I thought there was, um, you know, a lot of ideas, a lot of suggestions. Um, Albany has similar problems, maybe on a larger scale um, than we do. Um, I'm surprised that twenty to forty incident reports a month, but it's bigger. It's a bigger system, more people too. Um, but one thing that that, uh, as you had in my report that, uh, really, um, intrigued me was, uh, the community relations, uh, position that they use now. Um, and, um, I guess that's where I was changing my mind here. A bit, but I I just, you know, my experience with the official security guards hasn't been good. And the people I've, uh, come in contact with are just not, uh, what I think is is good for a library environment.
Well, I also found it interesting that that was echoed by the director of the Albany Library.
Yeah, yeah. They have, they've had a lot of experience with security guards as well.
Paul, I know we, I know we were just kind of like discussing this, um, at the finance committee meeting, but I don't know, Kirsten, Sam, you could like give them a little more background on what Albany is doing. Feel like that might be in.
I was at that meeting.
Yes, sorry.
Um, there is, I can, I can put this, um, Virginia, the very excellent, uh, note taking for that meeting, and I can include that on our Dropbox. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you, Virginia. You're welcome.
Very detailed.
You know, um, if you don't mind, there was someone, there was a remark made that what we're doing is somewhat similar to what's going on over at Albany. I think there's a lot of us that don't know what else is going on here plan-wise. Are there other things that we want to know about?
Uh, yeah. Did you have something in mind?
No, Vir- Virginia made a comment, um, at the meeting last Friday that, um, they felt that they were doing similar things as part of the safety committee, I presume, um, that they were at Albany, and I'd be kind of curious to know where we're overlapping in terms of that. Because I wasn't, I'm not really aware of, a lot of, a lot, a lot of it was brought up on Friday. It was very new to me. I haven't heard of that coming from anything that we've been doing internally. So I'd be kind of curious to know what we're doing.
I'd be willing to flush that out if you like.
Please. Yes, please. Thank you.
Right, so a lot of what Andrea was discussing is things that we already do, um, internally, uh, not just as part of safety committee. Either things in progress have been existing. There are a few things that could be flushed out that we are already working on, like internal staff training. Um, but incident reports are filed. We rebooted the safety committee, just as she did. Um, we identified blind spots, line of sight, emergency egress, a lot of the tools that she used, like having policies, code of conduct, um, making sure things are posted, such as the code of conduct is posted prominently throughout the building. Um, I can't name all the places, but I can name at least six if I think about it enough. Um, empowering the staff to call nine-one-one, making sure that, um, we do one-on-one follow-up when there is a major incident, sharing our, um, resources that we have available for, uh, employees through ADPs such as grief counseling or, um, other resources of that, uh, regard. We do not have ambassadors and that sort of thing, um, but the community engagement clerk has been something that we've been discussing, um, prior, the, you know, Paul had the job description from the Saratoga Library that was actually shared by an employee, and we've been discussing those options. Uh, de-escalation training, we did that at our January in-service last year. Um, it is something that I am big on. We do a lot of one-on-one in my department with that stuff and follow-up. Um, critical tools following up. Andrea quoted the, uh, Urban Libraries Trauma Study. I actually participated in that trauma study, and I encouraged the board members that came to the department head meeting um, to read that. Um, that was really focuses on uh, institutional response to an incident, and the difference between whether or not something becomes traumatic or is just a bad experience is typically the response that's given. Um, the Google Form for incidents, we actually already looked into that, and the questions that I asked Andrea about photos and videos are because those are the reasons we rejected it. Um, but we've been actively looking for alternatives, and we are actually going to be revisiting the Google Form option again next week. Uh, we use collaborative efforts with the director and senior staff to address safety measures. Um, you know, the, like, all of those things that she was going on, um, are things we already do. Now, internal training from outside sources or more cohesiveness with that training is something that we've been looking at since January of last year um, and working towards that. Um, communication internal has always been a historic problem in Troy Public Library, so trying to address those things going forward as well. A lot of what Andrea mentioned during that was stuff that we already have in place or on our scope. Um, I know Paul asked Andrea if she had counselors that come in, because that's something we've been discussing, is the possibility of offering um, direct one-on-one time with, for employees. Um, so it was interesting that, you know, she said they could deploy if there was a tragic incident. So that's what I meant when I said it's, we could have given the same speech, because we are doing the same things that they do. We are aware of the gaps and the holes, and we've been working on them, but it's a slow process.
Yeah, I think, um, one of the takeaways is, um, I think they're doing a lot more in terms of training staff than we are. And I think they can be a resource for that particularly. Uh, we're going to a training session that Albany is holding tomorrow. Um,
That's what the?
About de-escalation.
What's that?
Jack Rogan from.
Yeah.
GTA.
Um, so I, they, they quite a bit ahead of us on, you know, some of these training opportunities. Um, we also, uh, are going to be putting in place, uh, the availability of, uh, library two point O, uh, which is probably some of the best training, um, videos, uh, out there for library, uh, library employees. Um, starting, starting in January, um, and then follow through with, um, department heads in terms of setting up um, you know, specific sessions, um, with people and following up with conversation and discussion of, um, results. So anyway, as I say, we're looking at, um, a lot of different, um, employee training possibilities.
Oh, uh, can I ask a couple of follow-up questions of maybe Paul and Virginia? If, is that allowed in this section? Okay, um. So APL said that when there's an incident report that they follow up with a staff member within two days, and I just was curious what I know that you will do insurance. You reach out to insurance if necessary, but are you, after each incident report, is there a a department head or Paul, are you reaching out to the staff directly to check in on them? And how long does that take?
Well, basically, that is up to the department heads, and I can say, um, you know, that they would normally follow up within a couple of days.
Is that?
I, I haven't, you know, checked with every department head.
Okay, so is there? Is there security?
Um, but, uh.
So is there a protocol within like a time period where a department head should reach out to?
We don't have a specific one, um.
I can't, I can't speak for other departments, but, um, pretty much mine's in real time, whether or not I'm in the building. So, uh, if something happens, like, um, referencing the K-two incident specifically, I had went home sick that day, and I actually was made aware of it happening in real time and was able to connect with my employees via text or phone call that were present in the building, and then we follow up with conversation and check-ins pretty much every time, um, for at least a week, even if it's just a conversation about what, you know, how are you today? You know, if somebody says, you know, I'm really shook up about what happened. Okay, do you want to talk about this? There's a level, depends on the type of event. Um, the person's personal comfort or safety level or what they're experiencing, but we also, like with big things, um, most of the time employees will have the shock moment where they're, they're like, I'm fine, and then a week later they're not. So you do have to follow up periodically. It's not like, okay, I did this today. They're good forever now. Um, and I make that clear with my employees, like you can bring this back up, like one, one in, one person with one incident in my department said, you know, I really can't talk about this right now. And I said, I understand that if there's something that I can do to help you, or if I can connect you, do you want me to ask you again? Do you want me to wait for you to come to me? It really depends on the person and the situation. Um, and at least that's, you know, speaking for my own department.
Well, thank you. Um, I have two more questions. Um, she had, I I know that you have, um, a sign with all of the rules of the library that are sitting at like
The code of conduct.
The code of conduct, and she had mentioned about just having like a one sentence or like a couple of words that can just be pointed at if there's a situation on the wall. Is that something that is in the library that we consider adding? Just as it's like a quick.
Albany had that sign up. I don't have it in front of me, but, uh.
Yeah, is that something that?
It was simple, um, you know, one or two things, you know, um, ours is like this, yes, and we posted that, um. Yeah, it's something we can certainly look at, but we don't, we haven't yet.
I mean, would we be able to essentially just remake theirs and imprint them?
Yeah, theirs was pretty.
Maybe theirs was pretty. The one, the one she sent us would be easily adaptable.
Yeah. Cause no one's really gonna sit and read that code of conduct and the staff know exactly what you want to point to, so. That way it's just a quick, like, oh, nope, you're violating this, you know.
Well, the code of conduct though is, is mostly for the staff. Because they can point to it and say, you know, this is.
Right.
Our code of conduct and that behavior is not acceptable, but you know, no, nobody sits there and reads it.
I mean, essentially, our code of conduct is the first paragraph. The rest of it is just examples. It's not meant to be an exhaustive list. Because Paul has always allowed the catch-all phrase and this is what I teach my employees. The only thing you need to know about the code of conduct is that you cannot interfere the use of the library for another person. So what you're doing is disturbing the space for, for anybody else to be in it, including employees. Then it's violating the code of conduct and all employees are empowered to enforce it.
It is sort of the golden rule that we go.
But I agree, yeah.
Um.
But I agree, a shortened sign would be easy um and for the patron aspect. Um but I didn't get any of the follow-up documents from Andrea, so I'll follow up.
You got though.
No.
Yeah, I think keeping the code of conduct on the, on the staff is important, but just having a quick that they can refer to. And then if someone argues, they're like, here, read our whole code of conduct.
Yep, totally agree with that.
Uh fantastic. Is that something that admin needs to, to get together or how do we make that happen?
No, we can handle it.
Okay, fantastic. One follow-up question, one last question that I'm done for now. Um I was just curious when the last, if you do, and when the last time there was a staff engagement survey. Cause I thought that was really interesting that that was the first thing that the director did when she entered. And how does that, what does that look like?
The survey?
A staff engagement survey, yeah.
Um.
Just as a, uh there was the first thing that the Albany Public Library Director brought when she started last year. And it was anonymous and she had a hundred fifteen employees and I think she said seventy-five percent of them.
Yeah.
Filled it out, so I would be very curious when you've done that, how you do it.
We have not done that. Um. It's something that um probably should be done.
Even if it's like a yearly thing?
Yeah, maybe come January, the new year.
Yeah.
Might be a good.
I think I, my thoughts was that it would be broader, I guess. If we could find out, um you know, what people are thinking about a variety of things. Um with, in relation to their employment and in relation to the library. Um. But yeah, I think it's probably a good idea.
Get some year-over-year data, um how our employees are doing, how they feel, their outlook. Yeah, I think all that can be included.
Yeah, yeah, no, I do. I guess I. I guess, I, I had still had a question of whether this is anonymous or not, or I don't know yet.
I think anonymous is better.
Yeah.
Because people will feel more comfortable.
Yeah, I think you'll get better answers if it's. Then you don't know.
And, and it doesn't necessarily, it's a, it's a heel end or a starting point that maybe then. We further engagement needs to be built off of that. Uh and that may involve more one-on-one with the department heads or with key personnel and.
But if you want like real results.
Right. You can always add an option that says, I would like to be contacted directly for follow-up questions and then they can choose.
Right.
Okay, well, maybe within the first quarter of the year, that could be something that we get out.
Think about, yeah. Have a draft in a month or two. Um I just had one thing or two things, three things maybe, um. Virginia, uh thank you so much for um all that clarification. I really appreciate it. And I just wanted to make clear that I wasn't coming from a position of uh critique or anything. I was genuinely curious, um and that really filled in the gaps of my knowledge. Um I know you and the rest of the staff are working very hard to improve things against all odds. So I really appreciate all the clarification and um.
Thank you. I didn't, I didn't take it any other way. Uh I really just saw it the same way.
I like to be clear.
Thank you.
Second thing, um I appreciate uh your comments on following up with employees after incidents. Um I think it would be wise to have a formalized standard though. Just because different um department heads, different branch managers, um they might have different management styles. And just having like a baseline, I think would be good of, you know, two, three days, whatever.
You know, baseline.
Yeah.
Yeah, like beyond that is.
It's, it's up to their management style, yeah.
I don't codify that at the moment, but I think probably it wouldn't hurt to do that.
I think it would be a good idea. Um. And yeah, I guess generally I thought Friday's meeting was great. I hope that we can mutually share information between our two library systems.
Big load, like moving here. Small town Massachusetts library.
Yeah, no, it.
Yeah, well, but she described it as small town versus the urban lifestyle.
Arlington's very white.
A little different, I think, from her.
And it's, it's filled with pharmaceutical employees. I had several friends who moved to Arlington. Right on the commuter lines, so. A million dollar knockouts.
All right, does anyone have any other questions, comments, thoughts about? You know, safety issues and reports?
Paul, I would love to hear back, as I mentioned, the rest of us, what about how generally people feel about the CDT training?
Yeah.
I would love to hear about how that goes. I'm very curious.
That's kind of why we're going is to get an idea that uh maybe Jack could be a good person to have.
Yeah.
Besides, we have a relationship with CDT anyway. It should, it should be free.
You tell them we'll store one bike.
I'll take two, put them in my basement. We can all share them.
Which is why they've got a nice little situation.
They keep them in the basement garage or whatever.
I've literally always wondered where they go.
Library of things.
Yeah. Check it out during the winter though.
All right, so. Can we be, yeah, we'd really like to hear how you all think of this um, the program too. And any future relationships we can have. I know, I know, but we'd like to hear it before, maybe even next month. And any other things that you might um be thinking about in coordinating with APL? I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, one last thing that I missed. Um when is the blind spot three cameras install gonna happen? Do we know?
I don't have this particular thing.
Um I was just curious.
It's, it's in the hands of our um contractor at the moment. Um I would expect, I, I guess if it's not done in the next week or so, I'll give them a call back.
Would you say, you mean the IT contractor?
No, no, no. International built-in system.
All right, I just was, I didn't know Sean was doing it. I wasn't sure Sean was one putting them in.
No.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so are we good with this number? All right. Uh the twenty twenty-three audit.
Yes, um we have had um.
Oh, I didn't know this was on.
So sorry, I, I tend to go according to the actual agenda.
No.
And then we'll go back to that.
Oh, okay.
He's, he's down here number four anyway. He forgot to put himself on. Okay, we're doing audit.
Oh, okay. I thought I was starting.
Okay, I know, but then they're.
Okay. We've had um Benardio Group uh do our order for the past years. Um our fiscal policy says that uh we don't need to change um for five years. So the question is, do we want to sign a contract with Benardio again for twenty twenty-three, for twenty twenty-three audit? And you had a resolution, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Right.
I mean, I, by the way, see no reason not to. I, they do a good job and, you know, to everybody.
We'll put out the resolution, we'll do a second uh and then we'll discuss how's that sound? Okay, the Board of the Troy Public Library authorizes the TPL Director. To reengage the auditing services of Bonadillo and Company LLP. For year four twenty twenty-three of our five-year agreement.
Can I ask one thing? But I assume the five-year agreement we have is some anti-corruption law. Like we can't do it for more than five years. I don't know anything about it.
It's just considered best practice. It, it was originally three. Then we had some issues, so we made it to four and then we decided, once you got someone and they're good, keep it for five. So we, we left it at five for now.
Good to know.
And then we look for somebody else.
Cool, that was, okay.
So that is the resolution. Do I have a second? We have a second discussion.
At one time, uh you had brought up not having a full audit, not having like a full audit.
Yeah, I brought that up. I was trying to say.
Right.
Um I think that with this group, we had originally said that we would e- expect to have them do the audit. For three, in three consecutive years. I mean, do we want to consider? A shortened kind of review as you had. Suggested at one point.
I, I don't, I, what I learned was it's probably not possible to do a shortened one. Based on the fact that our audits are done according to government regulations. Um. And as I called around to everybody, um. It just is good practice to have an audit, audit for this size organization every year. I mean, is really, didn't find any good way out. It's fifteen thousand dollars, by the way. Yeah.
How much?
Fifteen thousand.
Got into the wrong field.
And some of the advice from Upper Hudson is, because it, this came up as a discussion of whether or not to go governmental audit. To just, um I forget, there, there's another term for the lesser audit. And then maybe once Noel go back to, but there was no cost savings in going up and down and up and down because. They've been sticking with the same auditor for a while. Um it just works out better. Once they've got everything in place to fill in the blanks and do that same kind of research. Because when they switch their perspective on it and then have it switched back, it becomes even more costly.
Well, they're also, they're, they need to follow government accounting standards. When they do an audit for our organization.
Um, yeah, we're different than Upper Hudson.
And they literally can do a modifying, um audit, unfortunately. You know, the accountants made up the rules and it's kind of like the lawyers. They make up the rules and then they charge it to interpret them. But anyway.
I, I was kind of just made contact. I think we've had some recent changes in some of our financial structures, like our retirement program and things like that. So I think having a, a full audit at this time is not a, a bad thing to do in there. So just check in, see how things are looking there, because we have made some changes that are, deserve a look.
A lot of people also feel that sometimes having a full governmental type audit helps you with certain grants. You know, when you're granting, the granting agency looks at, you know, your financial status. There are places that want to do it and haven't been able to accommodate that and they can't go after certain things. Okay, so we do have a motion. We have a second. We've had any other discussion? Questions? In that case.
About accounting.
So everyone, all in favor? Go on back in. Okay, then we're going to go on to the tier, which I know you, you brought it up, but you wanted to have.
Yeah. As you know, of course, we um have signed up with the New York State Retirement System for our primary retirement. Program. Um we do currently have a four oh three B plan through TIAA. And that plan and that contract calls for. A five percent contribution from the library and a five percent contribution from each employee. Uh to that plan. Um now they also have. Um it's kind of a dual plan. Um that plan was the original plan and they also made available. Um another four oh three B, which the employee can contribute more than the five percent. Up to, I guess it's twenty thousand.
Whether the like IRS, taxes.
Um. So. Since we have joined the New York State Retirement System, we have a couple of options um. When considering our current four oh three B plan. And they sent those options and I, I did put them in the drop-ups, right?
And everybody got an email about it.
Everybody got an email. Good, okay. I knew I did something. Um. You can freeze the plan, you can merge a plan, or you can terminate the plan. I, in reading it over and um contemplating the different options. I think the freezing one is probably the most sensible option for us. And really, all of that involved with freezing a plan is that if the library. Uh stops contributing the five percent for each employee. The employee may continue contributing through their plan. Um and the plan stays in place. Um so the library still offers a four oh three B plan. Um the merging option, I'm not sure I understand because we don't have anything to merge it with. Um far as I know, um. And the terminating um of the plan would require um. Some legal counsel. To figure out exactly what happens with terminating a plan like this. Um. I certainly don't want the distribution of my plan at this point. Nor do I want to pay taxes on it. But um I'm not sure of the ins and outs and what, what they really mean by this um. And I think it only. It is, is an option for an organization that is pretty much demand disbanded. Um the organization would no longer function the way it has traditionally functioned. And so they might want to terminate this particular four oh three B plan. Anyway, I, I offer this at this point for people to contemplate. And um ask questions that I can pass along to the attorneys. Or have the attorney come to a meeting. Which also is cheap.
I was going to catching pitching.
Yeah.
Um I don't know, maybe this is just occurring to me, with me now. That the disbursement part of it, you know, if you terminate, you don't want the disbursement of it. But maybe if there is that, I think it's one of the, ties into one of the questions we brought up during the finance committee meeting.
Yeah.
That maybe it can get transferred to the tier for, not the tier, but another deferred compensation plan.
Yeah.
And therefore you wouldn't have to worry about the taxes.
That's a question for.
We can add that to the list.
Yeah.
Um uh, no, no joy there. That, maybe that's the follow-up, the second part of that question about. Transferring the money. Also, what happens if you terminate?
I have a note. But I, I really don't know. I mean, I can't really.
Is there a timeline? How soon this needs to be resolved?
Apparently not, because we asked them six months ago for this option. So apparently they're in no hurry. So apparently they're in no hurry.
We're just hoping to get.
Charging its monthly?
Yes, we're just hoping to get.
They they understand that, um, you know, we're not contributing, you know, and they understand that, you know, all of that. So, no, they're not pushing for any particular date.
Thank you.
Do you feel like trying to keep a January deadline is a good idea so we can get on track to having the library actually contribute to employees for time of flight? Some point, so.
We are.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, so that's done, and we're doing that. This is for them, uh, place to put something extra in.
Thank you.
Another thing. I figure out what they're doing with their T F, because everyone's kind of wondering what's going on.
Gotcha.
But we'll see. For those people who weren't in the Finance Committee meeting, Keith had sent out an email. With information on the deferred compensation program. That is available through through the state. And so the questions as to how this would mesh. Were brought up during the Finance Committee meeting and it was recommended that answers be obtained and for the the next meeting. In January. There there doesn't to be some. Sink. And that people could transfer. From Tia Craft into the deferred comp. According to some of the reading that I did of the materials that Keith had forward.
Director's report.
What's still on T I A A and a person?
Oh, you had more.
On a personal note.
Yes.
If I might. I have quite a large investment in my D I A A account. I've been here thirty-five years. So I am concerned.
Yes.
Um, I would not be comfortable moving to. You know, another.
Different account?
Yeah, and a a different account. I mean, T I A A is, um, a very trustworthy organization. That's one reason that we belong to it. Uh, and have belonged to it for quite a while, probably forty years. So I am concerned at this point. Being of retirement age. Anyway.
You might not be the only one here that is, has that concern to him. That might be something that might be good to question some staff members to see what they think about it.
I think it's a good idea.
I don't know. Okay.
And Paul had mentioned that there were six people.
Yeah.
And Tia Craft bet this would.
Anyway, I've covered almost everything, uh, in the, uh, safety portion of my director's report. In the staff portion, um. We have offered Ruth Smith, a physician here as a librarian one in the Adult Services Department. Um, she's to begin, uh, January eighth. Um, she's currently employed with the Charleston County Public Library in Charleston, South Carolina. So she's kind of used to urban libraries. Which is good. And Will Ocasio has resigned her position as librarian one in the Adult Services Department.
Do you want to do it? Or do you want me to do? I'll do.
You do it.
Okay, um, we have two things we need to do. One, we need to approve of Ruth Smith's hiring, and we need to acknowledge, uh, Will's resignation. So the motion is that the Tri Public Library Board approves the hiring of Ruth Smith. As a librarian one with Adult Services Department.
May I ask a procedural question?
Yes, please.
Is this is, this is, I assume, something we do. Just as like, no, this is, this is just something, we don't have any real say. On whether they're actually. Yes, genuinely.
If it's a service position, we pretty much have no real say in this. However. If you will check your handbook, it's a report that we do these two things. So we do it. It's one of those, I don't know, catch twenty-two. It's one of those Byzantine bizarre.
The school districts do the same thing. I mean.
Wouldn't want to be in a position where. Usually to find out, oh, there have been twenty people who've been hired that we never knew about.
The fiduciary part of it, our responsibility. So we know, we've added someone to the budget. We know we've taken someone out of the budget. I mean, that's the rationale sort of behind it, but it is what we're. So.
Thank you for clarification.
So we have, okay, any discussion? All in a. All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, so number two, uh, the motion is that we acknowledge the resignation of Willa Sinia. C. Ocasio from her position as librarian one in the Adult Service Department. Have a second.
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
So Paul is referenced now at full capacity? Are we still down a a position?
Down one.
Down one.
Yeah. We have another interview Thursday. I'm working on. Okay, and then the only other thing I had was statistics, and I must apologize because I don't have the full report. Cause we didn't quite get it done. This is kind of difficult to have the board meeting this early after the month is over. So you gotta compile all the statistics. But anyway. Um, I have a very brief statistical report, um. Overall, uh, circulation for November was thirteen thousand, came out even, actually, it's weird, strange. This is eight point seven percent higher than total circulation in November. Uh, two thousand and nineteen. As I told you before, I always were comparing. Current circulation with the last full year before the pandemic, because. Twenty and twenty twenty-one were pretty terrible. So again, that's that's an increase, however. This increase is primarily due to, um, electronic circulation of materials. And that is actually forty-seven percent higher. Than it was in twenty nineteen. So book circulation, actual physical books, um, actual, um. DVDs and and everything was actually down fourteen percent from two thousand and nineteen. So we're seeing a kind of a change in patterns. And I think that change was going on even before the pandemic, but I think the pandemic helped it along. People kind of got used to, uh, using electronic, uh, books.
Are we doing anything, Paul, as we move forward into this to capture the number of people who are coming into the building? Because I I kind of always feel like, okay, look, I I obviously Lansingburg is gonna look. The worst in this situation because they don't really get any credit for any of the electronic stuff that's going on.
No, they've been counting very well, actually.
Oh, they do. I thought you couldn't just, I thought you couldn't, um. Separate them out. I thought all the electronic stuff went to, went to the main circulation.
No, oh, oh, circulation, you mean. Oh, I thought you were talking about people walking in the building.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So we are counting people who are walking in the building?
Yeah.
Okay, because we never used to.
Well. We estimate here. By, um, you know, certain counts at certain times. So it's not, we don't have a counter on the door.
Right.
But Lansingburg's been counting people coming in, yeah.
Yeah, because otherwise they're gonna, they're just gonna look like nobody's, you know what I'm saying? If 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 you're only looking at the number of items circulating out of there, they're gonna kind of look.
Yeah, and this is true. The count for electronic circulation is under main.
Right.
Yeah, that's true. So you have to keep that in mind with those statistics. But, um.
And just even for our own knowledge, I think you need to know how many people, you know, I mean, when you're trying to talk about the library of people and. And you say something like that, that circulation is down or whatever.
Yeah.
To know that there's, yes, it might be down, and we, I know we used to count how many people get on the computers, but now people are coming in using the wifi.
Yeah, I mean, you count and then, um, you sort of extrapolate from, you know, the count at this time and then how many people in the building and. You know, otherwise you're looking at three different door counters.
Right.
For main library. And you know, it's kind, it's kind of funny. I mean, the, you know, people say, wow, that's really accurate, and then they see kids going like this.
Right, right, right.
It might be interesting to, uh, look at the attendance, the, uh. People in the building, between the two buildings, and partially, uh, distribute the electronic media between the two libraries that way well, so that. You can at least make some. Valuation.
Yeah, that's, that would be the, that's a big guess because you just.
It is a guess.
There's a lot of people who don't even walk into the doors.
That's what I'm saying.
Proportional estimate, you wouldn't get anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I know what you're saying.
At least it's not anecdotal.
Yes, it's based on some sort of.
There's really three different kinds of circulation. I mean, there's people who will only read paper books, hard. Copy books, people will only read electronic, and then people who read both.
Paul, when someone brings their own laptop or electronics. Does our system count getting on to tangle or untangle? When.
Or wifi.
Yeah, to get onto the wifi, you have to go through.
Yeah.
So it does count. So they have, you have some idea of how many people are still using the wifi. Yes, no?
Yes and no.
Okay. Alright.
Well, yeah, we do have a count. It's it seems high. I mean.
What do you mean?
I don't know if it's really accurate.
Why would it not be accurate is my question. If it's counting like wifi connections. Are you, are you worried about it, like someone coming in here with like a laptop and a phone, connecting on both or something, or? Cause I think that, I think that information is probably audible too.
I'll see.
Well, yeah, we have a count of when somebody uses. The website. But. When somebody, I don't know, it I, it's just not really accurate is. As far as I can see. And, you know, we got. Anecdotal evidence that people are using our equipment less and using their equipment more. Um, we used to have every. Lab or every, uh, PC can use when we were open. That's been cut in half.
Well, one thing with a formalized round process is. Say, um. You could on some timeframe actually count. So if you're gonna see all the noses. Find out what the nose is in front of.
Or you could have an estimate of how many people are in the building if somebody's doing, if you're doing the walkthroughs. I mean, maybe once a day, you count how many people are in the building. You know, if you're doing the walkthroughs.
Well, that, that's how you estimate, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm in the door count.
Right.
Basically. And then, but you have to, yeah, I mean, you have to kind of keep track of all that.
Right, but I'm just saying, if you're gonna be doing the walkthrough for security reasons anyways, it might be. A good way to to capture some of that information.
Right, maybe once a day you you count it.
Shape it a little better.
Yeah, it's interesting. I mean, I went up, um, a couple of days ago. I was up in the, I went up in the reading room just to do my own walkthrough and there was. So it's like about nine thirty, it was nobody in there. In the reading room. Today I went up, there was thirteen people in it, all working away. It's really, you know. Goes up and down. But, uh, so you have to sort of extrapolate from this. And and, you know, figure time of days and time of the year. December is generally slow, you know, um. And then, you know, figure it from there. And they actually ask you for that on the state report. And they also ask you how you calculated. And you know, hem and haul a bit.
Was trying to add a tally every time they do a circulation, if they're doing circulation every half hour, why not take a long? A piece of paper and just keep a tally.
It's not, uh, I mean, you don't want to load them up on these things because the purpose of it is, you know, is more security.
Being seen and engaging with education.
Like said, clicker or tabulation, I'm not sure that we distract from that. Maybe I don't understand how that, that walkthrough works.
We could see how the walkthroughs go with the staff, if it's particularly burdensome, but I do think, I do think counting during that shouldn't be too bad.
We'll have to check their YouTube video out. Maybe we figure out with words. Anything else on this? Any questions for Paul or Paul, anything to add?
That's all I got.
Old new business.
I saw that you got a response from the open meeting folks.
Keep getting the response, but they keep pretty much saying, I've asked them from different angles. The question came up about materials that should be posted online.
Yeah, what is, what is that?
Transparency.
Okay.
I mean, since I know now, now that I realize you want that bound line, it's about transparency and what we're discussing. So, um, and materials, we've, we've put up the agenda, I think we put up the director's report beforehand. But someone had mentioned that it isn't all the materials that we discuss, that we needed to put all the materials up. So I've been trying to find out, do we really need to put all our materials up? And their bottom line is, if you're gonna discuss it. So now it's a question of, are we really discussing A, B, or C? Supposedly a patron, someone mentioned to Marie, we never got an A, but someone had said that we're not doing what we're supposed to do. So they tried to.
Not doing what we're supposed to be doing based on.
Open meeting law.
Okay.
Yeah.
But wouldn't that be covered by the fact that we take minutes that show what we're discussing?
They want it beforehand, before the, um. It's like having certain things before the meeting so people can review or ask questions or figure out what we're doing before they even see the minutes. Not after.
Let's say that they connect by Zoom. They don't have access to the materials. Somebody comes in here, they're given a packet of materials.
If we have an extra, I'm just being.
You know. It is planned to have an extra.
There's someone over there, so you see, we keep that just in case people sitting over there. This packet. So someone had said there, we didn't have things up, so. What, what do you put up? What do you not put up? How much do you want to load? And I I tend to be very specific sometimes in questions and what's really more specific answers. And unfortunately, some, some people give you very specific, forgive you enough. Room.
So wouldn't it be the same as what you. You provide to, um, those people who come to the meetings, so. Why wouldn't you put that up online just as you make it available here for people attending?
Let's get this trial run, following the, the suggestion that is, that is which to be discussed, so. And when you're here, there's a different kind of discussion that goes on sometimes. Sometimes not, sometimes yes.
You know, our agenda. We put up agenda. You know, our agenda, we put up agenda. The Board of Trustees, today's general meeting. We don't, I question if we need to put up anything from the finance meeting.
It's a committee. No, it's, it's for the board meeting. And well, we end up doing really is, is going over the bills. So.
I have some questions.
But we do, we do, um, yeah, provide a, a packet of information that includes the finance committee materials when somebody is in the audience.
Which is to me, still strikes me as questionable in turn. Is it a vulnerability?
Vulnerability what's?
I having the invoice numbers here and somebody can see it and somebody find, find a way into our system and bring it out.
Based on an invoice that is from an external web provider essentially, for instance.
That's what I don't know. So when you don't know, I tend to be more sheltering. And also, you know, one thing we may need to look at.
I guess all this stuff is, they look already, they would just need to put in a foil request.
Do we need to? In some of our finance stuff. We, we're still showing stuff from twenty, some of these accounts from twenty-one and twenty-two. How long do we need to carry them out? In our finance, in our financial report. And since the investment account construction was restricted, we've got entries from six fifteen twenty-one.
Right, what's our, from eleven, the last two years or so.
Eleven thirty twenty-two, do we need to, do we need to be carrying the twenty-one stuff still, for instance?
I mean, because they, they are checks that can no longer be cashed. I mean, isn't that what you're saying? When you, when you displaying those, you're saying, oh, I have a liability for these because these, you know, we might have to pay it, but I don't think that, uh, checks are honored for that long.
Six months and you expire.
The basis of it is they want to see are the packet that Joy so kindly consenses for us to be posted on the website for transparency reasons? That's, that's the fundamental ask.
Was that they asked or was that material that we were going to be discussed was not included?
The feeling was that we weren't meeting open meeting law requirements, whatever the open meeting law requirements are.
Um, material to be discussed, literally.
Yeah, it was like.
But we got CLG, uh, I've got the CLG response. I got the last four thousand. That's to be the ultimate.
What did they say?
Material to be discussed.
Okay.
And I went through every single time, consented yet, what, what about this, these, you know, I heard, heard that part, but it was be more and more specific each time. It's like, it's yours to be discussed. So I'm going to go with there. So then we go, I think we go with what they say.
Legal perspective, yeah, yeah.
Um, if we decide to be, we desire, you know, I mean.
Sure, I mean.
If it helps to engage the public, then we would want to do that.
Somebody wants to look at the form we have to fill out for our trustee education activity completion. Okay. Don't do, do, do what, do whatever your organization does when you get a foil request, kill the paperwork.
Uh, okay. Any other new old business? Want to go going once, going twice? Where's Mr. Paul? Say what? You will, you will.
I would like to just make a formal thank you to the committee for the party. The party was very nice. The holiday party was very nice. It's that new business, I guess.
It is. It's absolutely new business.
Virginia did a wonderful job spearheading that committee.
Thank you very much.
For committee, it was a very nice event.
Much fun.
Appreciate being invited.
Always coming back in.
Okay. Any other from here, new old business? Do you have any old, new old business?
I'm confused as to what's gonna happen. So are we going to put the packet that we ordinarily have here online for the next meeting? I, what, so what is the conclusion?
Maybe this is.
Or it could be a board. That's funny.
We'll see what's up, give some flood, but understand that's what the, uh, CLG has said.
Proposing like a motion?
I'll be happy to propose a motion. I propose that I, I make a motion that we have this, uh, same material available online for people to look at ahead of our meetings as we have for them the people who attended person.
Um, can I just say something real quick with regards to, um, we, we do have some things that I, you know, we have the credit card statement there. It might have information that you don't necessarily want everybody to be looking at, meaning like account information. And that's included in your packet. So these are just things that I'm just throwing out there. For you to think about if you were wanting the packet or not.
Especially if you want to have it before the meeting.
Right.
You couldn't give Joy a chance to. Redacted things are redacted. Trying to do it before the meeting, I think that'd be very, very difficult. If you're gonna put a redacted version.
How lo, how long in advance does it have to be up?
Well, the finance committee meeting is five minutes before the meeting. So how, how would one go about redacting all that information in time before the board meeting? I, I don't see how that works.
And the bills have like account number, I'm just, uh, these are just things that I'm throwing out there, like invoice information is fine, but like, um, sometimes on the credit card statements, they do list, you know, this is your account and, and so on. So I, I'm just, it, it is, um.
Yes. I am not comfortable putting everything in a finance packet up on the website. I am not.
I don't think it's practical to do in a timely fashion. It, it before the meeting.
Anything on the regular board agenda? Yes, we should. Uh, what we deal with, the packet for the finance committee. It, as it sits right now, I think would be a vulnerability.
So perhaps we shouldn't be including that in the packet that we hand out to people if they attend the meeting in person.
I would agree with that.
I can certainly just put all those things in the Dropbox and then just have it available for the finance committee to review if you want, and then not have it in the general packet.
Um.
We can talk.
I think that's something we need to discuss because I think it's really important for everyone, everyone on the board to know what bills are put in front of us.
Right. So you would still get like the whole packet.
Okay.
I wouldn't print, you know, like for people to come in and per root. You, just the, the regular paper packet, it wouldn't be that, it, it would not include the finances. But you would still have the full thing online.
Okay.
I, I would.
For future, we, we, we'll, we'll work that one out. Okay?
Yep.
All right. So we know and everyone thought we're all on the same page.
I would say that at some point we might want to do a simple document, just a statement of, are we up or down for the month? But like, like the detailed information with the account numbers in there.
That could be part of the treasurer's report.
How about the income statement? I mean, that's, maybe that's something that should be available to people. As to, you know, how we're doing in terms of our budget.
So, so just, just to clarify, you're saying more available. That information is already available.
Where?
You would have to request it like legally. Because this is a public institution. You're saying we should just put it out there. I just want to clarify that.
I, I think so. I think that's the intent of the open meeting law.
We did have at one point a short income statement. Correct?
Well, we have two income statements. Well, is there a committee that we should refer this to, to admin, to design?
Yeah, that's an admin question. It's how we administrate ourselves.
What, what finance?
But finance is more about the actual numbers and money.
Prepared.
Prepared. But so I think admin is more administration. Um, that's.
But perhaps if the concern is around the finance portion, which is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
That makes it something that finance should review.
You should probably look at what's more appropriate, income statement or general ledger. But cer- certainly the credit card shouldn't be there and I agree with questions, some of the other bills, if they should be there. If. But because find out what would require specifically there, legally, as, uh, uh, some of these other bills could also give someone a competitive advantage. It might release proprietary information. But I do like the idea of looking at the income statement and or the general ledger for, to be provided to the public. But certain things like the credit card statement does not be out there.
Okay. So why don't we renew this at the, the next finance committee and make a recommendation as to what we feel should be conveyed and what shouldn't be conveyed within the material that's provided? Because the only question seems to be around a, around financial, although what you've talked about with competitive advantage could relate to the building committee minutes.
I, 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 I have no thoughts about competitive advantages in that.
You know, I've had people mention that to me and I can't.
Advantage?
Yeah, I, I, that, I, I don't, I'm.
I think it's a little far afield.
Maybe that I do want to, want others to see their proposal for, for uh, that, you know.
Threat applications?
Well, not grant applications like, uh, the proposal for the HSR, that sort of thing. So, but I don't, I, you know.
Yeah. This is why I think we're going into a question about which committee. I think finance has a say, certainly. It could be the finals recommending committee, but I still think it's also administrative.
I agree. That I agree that administration is a role in that, but I think in terms of what that financial document looks like and how that's prepared, I think.
That's finance. So.
Okay. Well, we'll discuss it at the next finance committee.
And I think we'll discuss it in admin too. And then we need to talk.
Is there an admin meeting?
Schedule? There will be.
Okay. And it's, I know, but Joy has said that she can't be on, you know, she can't read people's minds about when things are scheduled. So it's up to the, the chairs of the committees to let her know so she can put it on the, the website.
Schedule yet, but you know what? One of us actually corrects most of the things on there with the chair does it. So, uh, poor Joy gets a lot of messages, doesn't she, Joy? About changing the calendar.
Oh, I don't mind doing that at all. Um, I guess, sure. I just have a quick question having to do with what you all just discussed. So for the next meeting, just go about as normal, correct? Until we make a change.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you, Joy. Thanks for pointing things out to us too.
Sure.
We have a motion. We never had a second, so we don't have, it's, it's right now a moot point. So all new business?
There was all new business.
This was all new business, but there might be anything else. I'm just making sure no one's got anything that's.
I, I will, yeah, people, I don't know whether people watch the Gilded Age, but the library was in this week's episode of the Gilded Age.
I've not watched it yet.
Inside?
Was there a ball? No. Do you want to tell people what scene there was?
Uh, it, well, I think Paul had mentioned what it was originally when they were filming that it was a meeting.
No, the meeting room.
The meeting, okay. Well, not everybody may have been here or when, when that was mentioned. So we're just going to repeat it now.
Oh.
We're carefully.
If you look closely, they literally took down the light fixtures.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't notice that.
I was, I couldn't believe it. And they put it back. Just the way they were.
Okay. All right. The first season, I.
Yes. Yeah, I watched some of that.
Community feedback.
Are we the community?
No, if, well, if people have said anything to us about the library, that is a very good question.
Well, I.
No, then we'll ask, we'll, we'll get some more public comment. But if you do have something, so that this hasn't grown up things that they were thinking of themselves. So you are also considered a part of the community.
I, well, I want to say, I actually, I led a program last night. There was a polymer clay jewelry making workshop that I, I ran upstairs and it was like twenty people and there was a waitlist for it. And it was really fun for me to do to make, help teach people, people how to make jewelry, but also it was just, um, Chloe put that program on and I just, it was just really nice to be, I've attended a lot of the programs and to be a part of it and seeing how, um, how well those programs do here. So I guess that my, as a community member also feedback, I just think the programs are really fantastic.
They are fantastic. Yeah. And I will note, if you don't mind, that Zander did this as a volunteer. So there was no conflict of interest.
No, I, I, I just went.
He's an excellent teacher, by the way. Even I could follow what was going on. I'm usually the slower in the class.
Anyway, but I guess I, I highly recommend if you haven't attended a program here to attend one. I've gone to several and they're great.
Yeah, get your hands dirty, all the booze off, almost. Anyways.
So that's community.
Yeah. Any other community feedback? Can you? All right. How about comment, please?
I have two things, maybe three. Um, first, uh, regarding the holiday party. Thank you, Carolyn. I had a great committee. This was a great party. I was glad to see so many board members present. So thank you guys for supporting that and taking advantage of an opportunity to join us socially. Um, in regards to the open meeting laws, I, I do want to say from my perspective, I second what Joy had with concerns about um, account information, credit cards, that sort of thing. Um, but I do want to show support from Marie for following through and making sure that materials are available for the public. Uh, I think that's really important. Joy's made it very easy for the staff to have the agenda and the director's report and the president's report. Because if people are attending remotely, they have nothing other than what you're saying. And for the most part, you're not going to read those things out loud to us that are remote. So we really only have context in that which you use your discussion and not actually the original source material for the discussion. Um, so even myself, I wouldn't have known half of the things that you were discussing, um, such as even just the open meeting law, because Maria said, I saw that you had an answer. I read your president's report before, so I knew what she was talking about, but if that was not available, um, I would, that whole portion of the meeting would have been completely, um, without context or, um, following up. Um, I know that you explained it later. Evelyn, as questions came up, but I do want to support that transparency, which we've always been criticized for from the public. And not only was there your unnamed patron to Marie, but I do remember a patron sitting in the office with you guys when he was talking about how you didn't advertise enough for board trustees. And he also criticized the open meeting law as well. One person, yes, but that's usually my experience. If one person says it, two hundred have thought it. So I do want to show support for at least attempting to show some transparency with documentation. But I am extremely concerned about privacy with just releasing everything. So I'm happy that you guys are going to discuss it going forward. Um, but I certainly just want to cast my unsolicited vote towards more info. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you, Virginia. Okay. Do we have any more public comments? Okay. Do we have any more public comments?
Virginia, thanks again for coming in last month and locking, unlocking us out, I guess.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So no other public comments? Um, date and time of next meeting?
Is incorrect.
As typed. So, January ninth, second Tuesday of the month, twenty twenty-four. Hello? Okay. Uh, five o'clock for finance, five thirty for regular board meeting. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do, is there anything else? Just wanna make sure there's nothing else that we've left. Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Definitely.
And, and a second already. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Well, this is for being so good about staying till nine last. Now we get up.
I have to wake up at three in the morning.
No, I'm just saying, you see, now we get up early.